Good afternoon, Kingston. I am Sean O'Brien, your elected town moderator. With me is the town administrator Keith Hickey. Today is April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and we're here to preview town meeting, which is scheduled for April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, at KIS, Kingston Intermediate School, at approximately nine AM. Hello, Keith.
How are you, sir?
Good. How are you today?
Fantastic.
So how's the budget process been going?
It's been, it's been okay. It's, you know, it's been a challenge like it always is. We've, we're closer to a potential proposition two and a half override than we've been since I've been here. Fortunately, I think everybody kind of tightened their belts, belts a little bit, and, and there's no prop two and a half override being proposed this year. But we are, we have very, very little excess levy capacity left. Now, we've been eating away at that over the last couple of years for a number of different reasons.
What is levy capacity?
So levy capacity is, as everybody, I think, is aware in Massachusetts, is a proposition two and a half override, or I'm sorry, is, is proposition two and a half, which requires a calculation where ultimately taxes can't increase more than two and a half percent a year. Kingston has been conservative, where we've had some growth. We've estimated our growth to be a little bit slower than, than it's actually been, and we haven't spent as much money as we, we are able to spend, based on the calculation that's done every year as part of the proposition two and a half levy limit. So we had, Kingston had, three years ago, I think it was, probably two and a half, close to two and a half million dollars in excess levy capacity, meaning if something were to happen unanticipated, in an anticipated manner, there could have been a town meeting where we appropriated additional two and a half million dollars without needing an override. So it's a nice position to be in, because it's a, it's a, it's a buffer, it's a savings account, so to speak, that if something were to happen that you didn't expect, that's one option to fund whatever the need was, would be. We don't have that flexibility right now. Hopefully, with some changes in development, and hopefully the, the new well coming online sooner rather than later, we'll be able to get back into, you know, some, some commercial and potentially residential development, and our excess levy capacity will grow a bit, and we'll have some, some additional flexibility in the budgets.
Perfect. So at the town meeting, I will be requesting or asking the residents to vote on a consent agenda. It'll be part of the handouts. As soon as this meeting's done, we can probably make that online by the end of the week.
Sure.
But just to reference each article that I'm going to put on the consent agenda, I'll mention it today, so, like I said, that will be about fourteen articles that generate little to no debate, and I'll list them, I'll read them, and if no one wants to debate them, then we'll vote them all as one. I see we have about thirty-one articles and fourteen or fifteen on the consent agenda, so it might make us, give us time to go through the budget.
Sure.
Or some other things that will create more debate at the town meeting.
Absolutely. That'd be great.
Ready to go through it?
Yes, sir. Whenever you're ready.
Article one, prior year's bills, pretty self-explanatory, just paying bills from last year, about four thousand dollars.
Yep. The school department had three bills. It does need a four-fifth majority, which it does every year. Unfortunately, we seem to have a couple of bills every year that need to be paid, and a prior year, prior year article be placed on there, so this is no different.
Okay. And that's unanimous support by Finance and the Board of Selectmen?
Mm-hmm.
And the warrant is on the website now, correct? Anyone wants to read it?
It is. The handout that has the motions, a lot of the backup information, it's sixty or so pages, sixty-seven pages. So again, that's available to everybody. Hope you take advantage of taking a look at it. It tries to provide some backup documentation and support for the requests that are being made, so when you get to town meeting, you have a, a sense of what the requests are for and why.
Perfect. Article two, wastewater department supplemental F-25 fund budget request, favorable by Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and Sewer Commission.
So the wastewater fund is looking through to repurpose prior year appropriations, I'm sorry, they're going to take it out of retained earnings, I apologize, to fund a potential shortfall in their revenues.
And that's for three hundred thousand dollars?
It is.
Article three, supplemental FY-25 budget request.
There's two main purposes. The fire department, because of four long-term injured on-duty firefighters, the fire department has had to fund a significant amount of their shifts, paying overtime. The fire chief has tried to pare down that cost as much as he can. He was able to absorb thirty-five thousand dollars in unexpended loan items in his budget, but isn't able to absorb the, the additional funds. So there's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that's being requested to increase the fiscal twenty-five fire department budget to cover the overtime costs associated with those four firefighters being, being out injured for, for a good part of the year. Hundred and five thousand of that, of that will come from free cash. The remaining nineteen or so thousand dollars will come from unexpended articles from prior years. There's also a second part of, of the, of this request, just over ninety-six thousand dollars. There are a couple of lease payments that were due in, that are due in fiscal twenty-five that were mistakenly left off of the capital warrant article last May, so we're looking to appropriate those for fiscal twenty-five, so we can make those two lease payments on two existing pieces of equipment. That also is, is being requested for funding. So those are the two items.
And that's supported by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee?
It is.
Unanimously. The big one. Article four is the FY-26 general fund operating budget, up to sixty-one million dollars.
Yeah.
Went up a little.
It went up a little bit. Again, it's, it, it doesn't require proposition two and a half override. We've, we've used up the lion's share of our excess levy capacity, as I mentioned before. The, the school committee, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and, and all the other town officials, elected and appointed, who had something to do with this, really, really buckled down, tried to find ways to be able to present a budget that met, to the best of our ability, the needs of the community, without requiring a proposition two and a half override. That's what this budget provides. There are increases of more than, more than four percent in some departments. The, the goal was no more than a four percent spending increase. Overall, I think we've met that. Some departments, primarily public safety, and the local schools are more than four percent, but there are other departments that, whose, whose requested appropriations are less than four percent. So it's a big number. It was fifty-eight plus last year. It's now just over sixty-one. And all the, the detail of which departments and, and how much the, the request is, and how much the requests or the approved budgets were last year, so you can get a better sense, is in the handout by department. So if anybody wants to take a peek at that, they can certainly do that, if they have questions or want some clarification, be happy to provide that prior to town meeting if they're interested.
So I see this is a unanimous vote by the Finance Committee, but the Board of Selectmen, it looks like a three-two vote. Can you tell us, you know, your thoughts on what the issue is?
Sure. There was, there's one issue, let me back up for a quick second. The, the, the figures in Article four on the warrant are the figures being brought forward by the Finance Committee. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee had one difference in their fiscal twenty-six budget. The Finance Committee, towards the end of the budget review, there were some reductions in some of the budgets during the review, so the Finance Committee decided to reinstate twenty-five thousand dollars in the book budget for the library, excuse me, that I had proposed to cut. They reinstated that twenty-five thousand dollars. That twenty-five thousand dollars is in the Article four number. In the library budget, the Board of Selectmen did not support increasing the twenty-five thousand dollars for the library, so it's my belief that, based on the, the vote, that the board just did not support the twenty-five thousand dollars for the library, so two members voted against the operating budget.
So this twenty-five thousand, do you know if it's tied to any accreditation or, or funding or grants that has to be spent, or?
It is. And talking to the librarian, the librarian a little bit, you know, there's a certification process that the library needs to go through to get a state certification process. There's, there's a small amount of money in the big picture that comes from the state for accredited libraries that we wouldn't be eligible for, but I think more importantly, from what I understand, the, the borrowing, the sharing of, of resources from, to and from the Kingston Library, from, to Plymouth, Halifax, Plimpton, Duxbury, any, any library that's, that's an accredited library, they can share resources with other libraries that are accredited. We, we potentially, we're going to lose that benefit without the reinstatement of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. And Article five is the waste department enterprise fund budget and retained earnings appropriations for F-26, favorable Board of Selectmen, favorable Finance Committee, favorable Water Commission, favorable capital planning. This will be on the consent agenda, and this is the water budget, I take it?
It's the water department budget, very similar to last year. The, I guess the difference would be this year, and it's in the, it's in the, the article, they're, they're looking to replace a, an aging truck for seventy thousand dollars, so that, that is, that has been in the past, but we haven't had a capital item like that in the, in the, in the water department budget for a few years, but beyond that, it's, it's the operation of the water department.
Article six, leaching field debt expense reallocation, and that is not favorable by the Board of Selectmen, one to four, Finance Committee, three to one, and Sewer Commission, three zero.
So the, the, is part of the, the approval of the leaching field, that was approved eighteen months ago, I think, that had to be issued for that. Because there's a water moratorium in town, the new water users were supposed to be assigned betterment assessments to fund the, the treatment facility, the upgrade to the treatment facility, as well as the, the new leaching field with no water connections, I have no water betterments, or the water department has no water betterments, sewer has no, excuse me, sewer has no, sewer betterments. The sewer department is asking for the general fund to fund a portion of the sewer, the debt associated with the leaching field. Their rationale is that the town funded and continues to fund a portion of the original sewer debt that was issued over twenty years ago, almost twenty-five years ago, because it was a, it was a benefit to the community, and the community agreed to that. Those who were around twenty-five years ago, obviously Rocky Nook was, had some real, real health issues with regards to failed septic systems. The state was involved, and, and that's when the sewer, sewer department was created, and the, the, the infrastructure was constructed. So the Sewer Commission is looking for a little relief at the same percentage that they received relief twenty-five or so years ago, seeking that the, the taxpayers fund just over a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, which is, I believe, one-third of their sewer debt for that leaching field project.
So, so in essence, it's either the whole town pays for it, or they adjust probably the rates for the people getting sewer?
Yes.
Services?
Yep.
Do you know what that number ballpark would be roughly?
If the increase, what the increase would be?
If, if it's allowed, no increase. If it's not allowed, is it, you know, fifty, a hundred dollars a house or something like?
I don't know the exact number, what the impact would be for the house. I mean, it'd be, it would be fairly minimal over the number of users that we have over an annual basis.
But it would be an increase?
But it would be an increase, and, and they're looking to, they've increased rates in fiscal twenty-five. There may be a need to increase rates in fiscal twenty-six, based on the continued water moratorium and the inability to connect new people. So this will provide some relief from, you know, the, the rate increases, potentially, if this was to be, to be approved.
And speaking of the water, so are there four tanks up and running?
The sewer department, they're, all four tanks are, are, are operational. The, my understanding, last I was aware, the leaching, the new leaching field is not up and running yet, but it's, it's, they're ninety-nine percent done, there's some, there's some few check, checkboxes they got to check off on the punch list, but, but it's been constructed, it's been tested. I think it's operational, it just needs to be, get its final blessing from DEP, and it'll be up and running sometime this spring.
Nice. Article seven, wastewater department enterprise budget and retained earnings appropriation, favorable Board of Selectmen, favorable Finance Committee, favorable, favorable by the Sewer Commission.
Yeah, they, this, this, this is the annual sewer budget, just like the water budget. It's their, it's the, the cost to operate the wastewater department.
And that will be on the?
Consent agenda.
There you go. You're on it today.
Once in a while.
Article eight, renewable energy enterprise fund budget, also will be part of the consent agenda, favorable by the Board of Selectmen, favorable by the Finance Committee unanimously.
Yeah, we just collect, we collect and, and pay out the renewable, renewable energy revenues and expenses for that, so it's a, it's a self-supporting fund. It's been in place now for quite some time, and there's no impact on the tax rate.
Article nine, revolving funds, and this is Board of Selectmen favorable, Finance Committee favorable. This will be part of the consent agenda, and let's hear it.
So this is, there's, there's seven revolving funds right now, same number as, as fiscal twenty-five. People may remember that we increased the recreational revolving amount up to seven-hundred thousand dollars from five-hundred thousand last year, because they are collecting more and spending more for their programs. They also added a board of health, lined them last year, so that, so the board of health and the health agent can, can continue to hold different health classes, serve safe classes, things of that nature, that benefit the, the board of health and the health department for helping to educate and license our, our local restaurants and things of that nature. So this is, again, self-supportive, it's off the budget, there's no impact to taxpayers, and, and this is more of a housekeeping type item than, than most others.
And Article ten, also will be part of the consent agenda, is establishment of police activities revolving fund, not to exceed, I think, twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yep. Again, this is similar to the other revolving funds. The police department is looking to establish a revolving fund as well. They're looking to expand programs that they offer. They're starting to offer a boxing program to, to have, you know, members of the police department and, and member, youth members, in this case, of the boxing department of, of our community, interact more often, get, you know, establish relationships, and build a bond between members of the community and, and the Kingston Police Department. So we want to try to do that. They'll charge, you know, reasonable fees for the different programs they offer, and they'll be able to buy supplies for those programs that they're going to offer from this revolving fund.
So that kind of prevents them from, small portions from having to come to town meeting and ask for appropriations for?
Exactly.
Those activities?
Yep.
And it can't exceed the twenty-five thousand?
Nope. That's right.
Article eleven is transfer to employment liability reserve fund, favorable Board of Selectmen, favorable Finance Committee, and part of the consent agenda.
So we have, we every year have to appropriate money for, to, to fund the cost of separate, of employees retiring or leaving employment from the town of Kingston. Oftentimes, employees have some sort of vacation accruals that we by law have to pay out. There are longer-term employees that get a portion of their sick leave paid out, but those, those employees, I believe at this point, you can probably count on one hand the number of employees that that still takes into consideration. So that appropriation, we cut it from a hundred and fifty to a hundred thousand for this year to try to trim, trim back what we could. We expect to have some retirements of similar, a couple of longer-term employees in fiscal twenty-six, and this money would fund the costs associated with them leaving employment.
Probably should have done Article twelve with this, also on the consent agenda, favorable Board of Selectmen, favorable Finance Committee, transfer to other post-employment health insurance liability funds.
Again, it's, it's typically been a hundred thousand dollars. We cut it down to fifty this year, but it's, it's a, it's a money that gets set aside every year to, to fund post-employment health insurance benefit costs and that liability.
Article thirteen, part of the consent agenda, a transfer to capital stabilization fund, favorable by Board of Selectmen, favorable by the Finance Committee, and this hundred thousand dollars is for what?
It gets transferred to the capital stabilization account to, to fund, or to help fund our capital purchases. You'll see a capital item, a capital warrant article in a, in a later article. On the warrant, this hundred thousand dollars gets transferred into that to help towards the purchase or acquisition of our capital needs.
Article fourteen will also be part of the consent agenda, and this is to transfer to municipal building insurance fund in the amount of about ten thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm. Again, when we have deductibles on town and local school buildings, the deductible comes from this, comes from this account rather than, than a, a budget, another budget. Excuse me.
So the next one is Article fifteen, and that's F-26 capital equipment project funding. And this is how we buy things from the town, right?
It is. So there's a, there's a number of things. We've broken it down into three sections. The last couple of years, it's been, there's been two, two Arctic, two motions for this. The, the actual purchase of equipment or vehicles, which we're doing this year. There are eight items that we're looking to pay cash for, from police cars, like we normally have been. That has increased from two cars to three cars in fiscal twenty-six. We're also looking to buy a new lift for our public, or Streets, Trees and Parks Department. The lift that we use to maintain vehicles is, was recently taken out of service because of age and a condition. We're looking to purchase, excuse me, a new lift to allow our mechanics to maintain the vehicles without having to crawl under them.
I'm not CPS certified, so stick with me.
You got it.
Okay.
I'm trying. So, you know, we've got some, some other items, a couple of file servers for, for town buildings for our technology needs, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars to replace tasers for the police department that are old and outdated, and then some repairs to drain lines and parking lots at the schools.
And that comes to seven hundred and nine thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
So then the proposed local cost for grant applications, I see, it looks like there's a, another part two of this?
There is.
And that calls for three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for what?
So we have, the planning department is, is requesting that we approve, fund and approve three different grant, local grant costs, something a little bit different than last year. So with, with the approval of, of the MBTA funding, obviously, we're eligible for a wide variety of grants. We're trying to, we're trying to be proactive, and we're looking to try to apply for three separate grants. These funds, excuse me, the first two, the first two requests, one for Green Street's crosswalk realignment, and the second for the Pembroke Street, add grow street bicycle and pedestrian improvements. Those are for engineering costs. Those engineering costs would not be expended unless we, we receive the grant, so we don't have to spend that money ahead of the grant being approved. The third item, forty-nine thousand, five fifty, for Main Street pedestrian safety and traffic calming, from Pembroke Street to Summer Street. That's for engineering as well, but we have to, we have to expend those mon, those funds to allow us to gather the information we need to put a formal grant request to start making improvements to vehicular and pedestrian traffic along Main Street. That'll be a multi-phase, multi-year project that would be done by the town of Kingston. This forty-nine thousand dollars would provide the engineering services that we would need so we can get a, get a grant application submitted for the first phase of that project. If these, if, if we don't get the first two grants, they're being requested, all three grants are being requested out of free cash, we would not transfer those, those funds out of free cash, and our free cash number would just, would, would remain at, or, or be increased by about three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. So just to go back, the first eight projects, the seven hundred and nine thousand, that's supported by Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
These engineering costs, the hundred and fifty-one thousand and the hundred and sixty thousand, projects nine and ten, those two projects, if you don't, if you're not awarded the grant from the state, then you're not going to spend the engineering costs.
That's right.
But the Finance Committee, there's some members four, two, and, and two to three, do you know what they're, not to speak for them, but you're in the meeting?
I think that, again, with, with some of the financial challenges we're facing, I think there was a, a concern about utilizing some additional free cash, if we were fortunate enough to get the grants, and reducing that free cash number to something a little bit less than a million dollars, which is kind of the ballpark of where we wanted to be after our capital uses of, of free cash. So I think there was just some, some, some concern about?
Maybe not the right time?
The use of free cash. The, the, you know, the basis that we're trying, we're trying to take, can't, we are trying as staff to take advantage of an opportunity to, to get grant money, and, and fairness, just to be, you know, completely upfront about this, the, the construction costs that we're looking at for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the hundred and sixty thousand dollar project, the cost to, to make these improvements is probably roughly the same as what the engineering costs are going to be. So I think that was some concern that was raised by members of the Finance Committee as well, is we're not getting hundreds of thousands of dollars for this hundred and sixty thousand dollar investment, we're getting, you know, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in, in improvements to be done through state funding for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of free cash money to get the engineering done. So I, I understand the, the, we're not getting a huge return, but these improvements are, would be helpful to realign intersections and make it a little bit easier for those who are using the sidewalks and, and walking through those intersections or biking through those intersections to have it be a little bit safer.
Okay. So projects one through eight, the hundred, seven hundred and nine thousand, that's a majority vote, these three projects are also a majority vote. The last item on the article here is proposed lease payments, and that's a two-thirds vote in this, projects twelve through nineteen, and that's just prior lease payments that we're legally obligated to pay for anyways.
Right. If we have to pay the leases, we lose the vehicle.
Repot.
Pretty much, unfortunately, that's how it works.
Article sixteen is the Sampson Fund appropriations. This will be part of this consent agenda, Board of Selectmen approval, Finance Committee approval. This money isn't from taxpayer money?
No, it's from a trust, and every year, the, the town has a committee that gets together to identify the, and, and determine which requests should be funded. We have a couple of new requests this year, which was nice to see. This, this, this money is, is the funding that has provided the National Night Out funding for the police department historically, some, some other police department items, an outreach program and, and an informational kiosk at, at the animal control. Those are new items. We're looking for an electronic sign that could be placed in town to make people more aware of, whether it be meetings that we want to make people aware of, or events, or, worst-case scenario, I guess, some sort of an emergency we want to make people aware of. The Graves Beach Entertainment, things of that nature in the summertime are also funded through this, this grant opportunity.
And the luminaries?
And the luminaries, which are huge. I heard Santa Claus is fantastic.
Eyes like you. Eyes like you.
I don't know what that means.
I don't know. The eyes look familiar. Article seventeen will also be part of the consent agenda, and this is a Community Preservation Committee administrative budget, favorable by the Board of Selectmen, favorable by the Finance Committee, and favorable by the Community Preservation Committee, seven to none.
Yep. Again, this is money that's collected on people's tax bills. It was, this community preservation program was approved a number of years ago. Monies can be used for specific purposes, and nonprofits in town, along with town departments, can apply for and be considered for funding. There are, I believe, four projects this year that are, that were approved by the CPC Committee to bring forward to town meeting. A description and a vote is needed for all of those, four, independently, so you'll be able to see what those are for and what the purpose of them are.
So should we just get right to Article eighteen then?
It's up to you.
The Community Preservation Fund appropriations for recommended projects, Article eighteen, majority vote, Board of Selectmen, five zero, Finance Committee, two, three, and Community Preservation, seven, zero, and these are the projects you were just discussing.
Yeah. So the, you know, the money can be used for three purposes, one of which is affordable housing, so I know for the, the past several years, there's been a transfer every year at the request of the Affordable Housing Trust to transfer the monies out of the Community Preservation Fund and into a affordable housing fund that they could use for some sort of affordable housing project. There, there are some opportunities out there that they can use some of these funds for. We hope that they come to fruition during fiscal twenty-six, but at this point, it's unknown.
And the second project is replacement of a boathouse roof?
There's a temporary roof on the Jack Berry Boathouse, and they're requesting that the, the group who is applying for this is, is requesting that the temporary roof be replaced with the permanent roof.
And do you know why the Board of Selectmen is not supporting this at all?
I just don't think that they think the project is worthy.
Okay. And where is the?
I, I, I apologize, I don't know.
Me neither. I'll have to find that out.
I'll have an answer for you, town meeting. How's that?
I will specifically ask you. Um, the next project is, um, the cemetery. Well, actually, the next two projects are the cemetery, really.
Yeah, there are a couple of cemetery projects, uh, both fairly similar. Uh, one is the, the Evergreen Cemetery across the townhouse. The other is, um, the old burial, burial grounds, burying grounds, I guess they're calling them. Um, they're looking to, uh, have some trees that may be, um, in a condition that, that need to be taken down or trimmed back uh, to reduce the risk of, of trees or tree limbs falling on, uh, historic gravestones, or God forbid, somebody walking through the cemetery, um, being struck by, uh, some sort of a tree. So, um, they've asked for funding to, to deter, to start cutting some of these trees down to address the, the concerns they just raised.
And the Evergreens across the street from townhouse?
Yes, sir.
And the old burying ground? I get you again?
Yes, you did.
Yes. I'm on it today. Um, and there's one more trail project here, the appropriation to fund the Bates Pond Accessible Trail Project.
So the Bates Pond is near, is, is between the town office building, townhouse, and the, uh, the Council on Aging. And, um, there's a, a, a trail, uh, that's in very, pretty poor condition. What we're trying, what the conservation, uh, conservation agent's trying to do is, is to upgrade that trail to make it a safe, uh, a safe pathway for people to, to, uh, to walk around, uh, whether they be from the Council on Aging or just from the neighborhood who want to walk around the trails in this general area. So, um, there's, there's a funding request that was supported by, uh, Board of Selectmen and, um, the CPC to, uh, to have, to, to expend funds to, uh, address and improve that path.
And that's to make it accessible to people with disabilities as well, too?
Yeah, more accessible, ADA compliant, uh, safe to walk on.
And the Finance Committee, um, not a favorable vote on this one. Board of Selectmen supports it, and the Community Preservation Committee supports it. Article nineteen's pretty self-explanatory, elected officials' compensation, supported by the Board of Selectmen four-to-one, Finance Committee five-to-one. Um, and that's elected officials' money and a small bump for the town clerk and, uh, collector, treasurer.
Uh-huh, yes, sir.
And what, how much is the bump for those two?
So, the treasurer-collector would be three thousand six eighty-six, town clerk would be three thousand four twenty-one.
And moderator's, that's still a hundred?
Yes, yes, he seems very satisfied with that.
Yeah, I am. Cost me more to file the W-two. Um, Article twenty is Wage and Personnel Bylaw Amendments and Compensation, Compensation Schedule. This will be part of the consent agenda, favored by Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Wage and Personnel.
So again, this is, um, this is, uh, changes to the, to the Wage and Personnel Bylaw, um, as well as, uh, updates to the, uh, wage scales of, um, of the non-union employees. And the, and the adjustments and the compensation being provided to the non-union employees, uh, is the same as the union employees.
A two percent cost of living increase.
Two percent cost of living raise, yep.
Article twenty-one is also part of this consent agenda. It's a majority vote, uh, Board of Selectmen five-zero, Finance Committee five-zero. Um, and this is, uh, as it relates to federal, uh, stormwater permit.
So the town, every community, um, nationally, really, uh, needs to apply for and, and retain, and, and, uh, retain a federal stormwater permit that gives us, gives the town of Kingston, this specific instance, um, the legal ability to, uh, discharge water from our stormwater system. And that, that, the stormwater is being discharged in a responsible manner that it complies with federal bylaws. It's something that we have to do on an, and get updated on an, on an annual basis. Seventy thousand dollars seems like a lot of money and, and whatnot, but that's, that's the purpose of it.
Okay. Article twenty-two, reallocate prior-year appropriations.
So we had fifty thousand dollars that was appropriated for, um, for some, some road improvements that didn't get spent. We're looking to, uh, reappropriate that to be used for, um, fun, supplementing fun, supplemental funding, excuse me, for our complete streets plan. Um, to improve, uh, road and pedestrian safety, uh, needs we have in town. So those funds will be used for, um, generally for, uh, road and, and pedestrian improvements.
Sidewalks, potholes?
Not potholes, sidewalk improvements, design work, like we're trying to do with some of the capital items that we asked for, for the grants. Uh, we'll be, you know, trying to, trying to identify, um, funding opportunities to, to improve our traveling network.
And that is supported by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, if I didn't say that redundant. Um, Article twenty-three, Waterways Improvement Fund Appropriation, this would also be part of the consented gender as it's unanimously supported by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee.
So the operations down at, uh, the IDNA, uh, there are revenue, there are charges that we, that the town charges for boat slips, for moorings, things of that nature. Those, those revenues go into, um, the Waterway Improvement Fund. Um, what we, what we started to do in fiscal twenty-five was to ask for an appropriation, um, to allow for unanticipated expenses to be funded, um, through this warrant article. So we, we, uh, we, we spend, we, we can spend no more than thirty-five thousand dollars a year. This eight thousand dollars are asking to transfer into, um, the Waterways Fund would allow us to spend up to thirty-five thousand dollars a year on, uh, unanticipated expenses, whether it be repairs of boats, repairs of docks, things of that nature down, down at the, uh, IDNA.
So a good, another reason why we have the consent agenda is it, you know, moves the things that get voted on and routinely approved at town meeting and gives us time to talk about things like Article twenty-four, which is going to be, uh, a request for the creation of a Public Works Department, which is a favorable vote by the Board of Selectmen and not supported by the Water Commission or Sewer Commission. So what do you have to say about Article twenty-four?
So, Article twenty-four, um, the, the, the premise of it and the reason it was, we're talking about it and presenting something at town meeting. Um, our Streets, Trees and Parks Superintendent retired after a long career in, in Kingston. And what we've done, at least in my time here, is we'll take a look at, um, you know, department head job responsibilities when, when an opening occurs to see if there's, um, responsibilities that we can modify, uh, based on current need, uh, changes in their responsibilities, things of that nature. And, and when the superintendent decided to retire, uh, we took a look and, you know, there's been conversations informally about, you know, should we have a Public Works Department? That would, uh, have a, uh, a Department of Public Works, um, Department Head or Director, um, that could oversee, uh, the Streets, Trees and Parks functions that are currently occurring, you know, the, the Highway Department, the Transfer Station, things of that nature, but also be responsible for, uh, the day-to-day oversight, uh, assignment of work, um, of water and sewer employees. Right now, uh, the Water and Sewer Commissioners are, um, the, 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 the group that oversees the day-to-day operations of the Water and Sewer Departments. Um, they oversee and the, the Superintendent of the Park, of the Water Department and the Sewer Department report to the Water and Sewer Commissioners. Um, so I think some can argue that there is, um, it's, it just doesn't function as, as, as well as it could. Um, for lots of reasons. You've got different, different people who are making decisions, A, B, you've got a Water and Sewer Commission who, they certainly can meet more than once every other week, but they, they, unless it's an emergency, they don't. So if a superintendent needs to have an answer without having a special meeting forty-eight hours later, uh, they've got to wait a couple of weeks in some cases. So, uh, what, what the Board of Selectmen decided to do was, um, put together a working group that was made up of the Board of Selectmen Chairman Eric Crone, myself, Fire Chief Mark Douglas, our former Streets, Trees and Parks Superintendent Paul Basler, and then the Water and Sewer Commissioner as well. Uh, we've met, uh, a handful of times, talking about what the different options would be and how, uh, what type of recommendation we want, we want to bring to town meeting, if any, moving forward. So just to give people a, a, a real quick feel for, um, the structure as it currently sits today, basically, there's three si- and the way I would describe it is three silos. You've got a Streets, Trees and Parks, uh, Department, as I mentioned earlier, that, that oversee, uh, primarily highway and, and the Transfer Station that work for the Superintendent of Streets, Trees and Parks. Um, they, who works for me, and I work for the Board of Selectmen. Uh, the Sewer Superintendent and the Sewer Staff work directly for the Sewer Commission, uh, same thing with the Water Superintendent and the Water Staff. So, um, there's opportunities, I, in my humble opinion, to utilize resources and staffing more efficiently than we do now if we, if they were under one, uh, one umbrella, so to speak. Um, what we found, and some of the things that we'll mention at town meeting when we make this presentation, is that there are, there are issues, have been issues in the past about project and communication delays, uh, overlap sometimes in efforts, and, and because of that, there are inefficiencies. And, and, and trying to address the needs of the Water Department, the Sewer Department, and Streets, Trees and Parks. By combining them into one department, you'd be overseen, as I mentioned, by a Public Works Director, and it would enable that one, uh, Director to plan, uh, respond and execute, um, the day-to-day operations of those three departments. Uh, a lot of communities are doing it this, have, have evolved into this. Kingston hasn't. Um, there's been, there was talk about it several years ago. Uh, it did not come to fruition. Um, this, in my humble opinion, is a better way of doing business. So what are the benefits? Again, communication, I think, is, is, is better. There are fewer delays. Uh, there's an opportunity to share equipment and personnel. Uh, we do that now to some degree, but I think there's a, there's a, there's an opportunity to improve that. Um, a lot of the repairs that go, that occur now, if you've got a water main break, whether it be a sidewalk or a street, uh, I know that this, but there were some frustrations in the past about the way those were repaired by the Water and/or the Sewer Departments. Uh, you'd have a consistent, uh, repair standard, and if things weren't done properly, a, a one person who could, who could, um, respond to those, to, to that staff to have them make the, the more appropriate repairs. Uh, again, unified, unified emergency response. I'll use an example. This past winter, we had, uh, one of our few snowstorms, we, we, we had to, um, uh, obviously get everybody ready to go out and plow. We, the Water and Sewer Employees now, some of them are willing to come in and plow, uh, some don't, would prefer not to. We can't mandate them to come in, uh, so I actually had to have, uh, the Superintendent of the Water Department, uh, come in and, and man a plow. During a, during a snowstorm, that piece of equipment would have sat, uh, empty at Streets, Trees and Parks, um, not being able to plow. You know, one of the, one of the roots that, that, uh, Streets, Trees and Parks, Streets, Trees and Parks are responsible for plowing. And it just doesn't work. It's not efficient, it's not effective. Um, and, and again, we talk about, you know, trying to use more efficient use of our resources, you know, there's equipment we can share potentially better. And certainly, the resources would also include staffing. So what does that look like? You know, what it would look like is, is what you're, what you have on your screen now, um, as I've mentioned, the Board of Selectmen would, would be the appointing authority for, um, the Highway Department, Water Department, Sewer Department. Um, and as you'll see in, in a minute, uh, there's not, we aren't just, we aren't eliminating the Water and Sewer Commissioners. The, the role that they're playing, uh, is more policy-based rather than day-to-day operation-based, and I think that's important. Uh, it just allows us to, as staff, to, to respond, uh, in a consistent, timely manner. Where they, we, we aren't able to do that as well as we could be, um, we'd be able to in the future. So we've talked about some of these already, um, you know, the issues we had last year with plowing, um, some of the challenges we had last year with the Main Street Wa- Water Project, for example, uh, or repairs to, um, roadways that had to be cut into by Water and/or Sewer to make repairs. There'd be a standard expectation and the authority to require, um, the, the appropriate repairs to be made, um, which isn't the case now. Um, again, I mentioned, you know, the Water and Sewer Commissioners, we say, we, they're still going to be, play an important role. Um, they'd be in charge of rate setting, setting policies for, uh, the Water and Sewer Department, be assisting with the capital planning and the long-term planning of capital improvements. Um, and then, uh, work with the Public Works Director to, um, set, you know, long, short and long-term, uh, planning strategies. But I, I think the biggest, the biggest change, uh, would be the day-to-day operations would fall under the Public Works Director, the Water and Sewer, uh, Staff, the Water and Sewer Superintendents would, would remain, they would be responsible for the Water and Sewer Departments, but they would answer to a Public Works Director rather than to, uh, an elected body who meets every couple of weeks.
You taking questions?
Sure.
So Mr. Basler's job would never be filled?
So Mr. Basler's job would be, uh, would not be filled. It would be replaced by a Public Works Director.
And how would that affect costs for the town?
So the, included in the fiscal twenty-six budget right now is an additional thirty thousand dollars for salaries because the, the position itself, uh, when we compare it to other, uh, department heads in town and other Public Works Directors around us in similar communities, um, the, the pay scale is higher. So I've included, um, an increase in the pay for a Public Works Director compared to, um, the salary that, that, uh, the Streets, Trees and Parks Superintendent earned. I believe very strongly that the, that the, the, the coordination and collaboration of the departments, the sharing of equipment, the sharing of staff, um, will more than save that thirty thousand dollars. Um, there's a lot of different things that I think can be standardized, um, and, and resources better utilized that will provide, uh, savings to the community.
So you're trying to bring all three departments together, work together, complement each other when they can?
Absolutely. And again, the, the, the Water and Sewer Departments won't have any less, they, they will work as much as they do now on the Water and Sewer, uh, Infrastructure. But if there is an emergency, just like, just like there would be now, um, if there's an emergency in the Water and Sewer, they use Streets, Trees and Parks trucks. If there's an emergency, uh, for Streets, Trees and Parks, um, Water Department or Sewer Department employees who can, who can, uh, report into, into work do, and we try to utilize the, the, the assets that they have as well. The challenge is, again, that, um, you've got three superintendents answering to three separate groups. Um, and, um, I think if, if we had one department head that was working in collaboration with the superintendents of the Water and Sewer Department and the, and the Commissioners, along with the Board of Selectmen, uh, projects would, would, would operate more efficiently. Uh, the day-to-day operations, uh, I think would be more efficient and, and the projects that we're working on could be, we would collaborate better than we are now, trying to get, um, improvements done to Water, Sewer, or Streets.
Okay. And there seems to be, uh, not favored by the Water Commission or the Sewer Commission, and again, they'll have their opportunity to address town meeting, but do you know what, you know, why they don't want this? Not to speak for them, but.
Yeah, I don't want to speak for them, I think overall, um, you know, I think there's a concern, um, that, that, uh, you're, you're reducing the role of longtime, you know, Commissioners in many cases that, uh, have, um, a history with the operation of either the Water or Sewer Department. Again, I don't think anybody's trying to take that away. Um, what, 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 what is being proposed would be to, uh, and I can't, I guess I can't emphasize it enough, trying to coordinate the assets of those three departments, uh, and be able to, um, assign, you know, work and plan work that benefits all three departments as efficiently as possible, and that just isn't happening right now.
Well, uh, we'll discuss it.
It'll be a, an interesting discussion. So I guess, lastly, um, you know, again, if this is passed, we'll, we'll, we'll start recruiting for a Public Works Director. Uh, we've had a, an interim Streets, Trees and Parks Superintendent, Sean Turner, who's done an amazing job, um, in the interim position over the winter. Um, and, and his experience, um, doing this, but, you know, taking on this additional role will, uh, will significantly impact the, the, and benefit, you know, the organization moving forward. Um, but we've, we'll have this, we'll have this PowerPoint presentation on our website. Uh, I'm sure it'll be a lot of discussion at town meeting, and if people have questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
And that's on April twenty-sixth?
It is.
Nine AM?
Nine AM, intermediate school auditorium.
Article twenty-five and Article twenty-six, we'll kind of take them together. It's the Heroes Act, uh, Cost of Living Adjustments. Um, what do you have to say about those two?
So a couple of things, and, and they are somewhat consistent. The, the, the state legislature approved increasing, um, increasing the, the veteran, disabled veterans' benefit. Um, doubling it, basically, and they also. and they also instituted a new law that allows communities to consider, and if they approve, in this case, our article for, for this Article twenty-six, I'm sorry, Article twenty-five, would allow for a cost of living raise. So every year, a cost of living adjustment, I guess I should say, so every, if a disabled veteran gets some sort of an exemption now, that exemption would, in all likelihood, increase with the cost of living on an annual basis. Right now, it's a standard number, it doesn't move unless there's a statutory ability to allow it to move, and the town meeting approves that. With this first article, you'd be able to allow for disabled veterans to receive a cost of living adjustment for their veterans, disabled veterans exemption. The second one is actually an increase in the veterans' exemption amount. The veterans' exemption was a thousand dollars, the legislature has allowed communities under local control to increase that to up to two thousand dollars. What the Board of Assessors has done with, I think, some concern about our current financial challenges, they're looking to increase that from a thousand to fifteen hundred, and then when appropriate, review this again and bring forward a potential additional adjustment to get it closer to the two thousand dollars. But right now, the Board of Assessors is requesting to increase that from a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars as part of this warrant article.
And roughly, do you know how many households are affected by this?
There's three, four dozen households, I think, that are affected by this. I can get, I can get an exact figure, we'll have that for town, for town meeting, the Board of Assessors will have that information, I don't know the exact number.
Somewhere from thirty-six to forty-eight, arrows. And so this was favorable by the Board of Selectmen on Article twenty-five, four to one, Finance Committee was a split vote, and the Board of Assessors was two oh. Article twenty-six, favorable by the Board of Selectmen, four to one, Finance Committee two to four, and the Board of Assessors two to zero. And a lot of the Finance Committee, I guess, probably not the right time for that, is just the.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's true, yep.
Moving on to Article twenty-seven, Establishment of a Taxation Aid Committee, not liked by a lot of people.
Yeah, so our tax collector was made aware that there was, again, a new law passed that would allow communities to bring forward, and if approved, approve some legislation that would allow for people who chose to do so to voluntarily provide a donation as part of your property tax payment for those who are having some financial challenges, and provide them some relief. There would be a committee, as you mentioned, set up that would have to be established, consistent with the state law, but this would allow for anybody who voluntarily wanted to donate any amount of money to, to the town, and this committee would identify those who have applied for assistance, whether they were eligible to receive assistance and in what amounts, and whatever funding would be available in that, in that taxation aid fund could be, could be provided to those in need.
And like I said, it wasn't supported by the Board of Selectmen at all or the Finance Committee.
Right.
Article twenty-eight, authorize the selectmen to accept and dispose of property.
So the, the town has been approached by, by a developer to see if there'd be any interest in transferring properties around the station, Fire Station Two across from the mall, there's a small piece of property that the town would provide to a potential developer who could then utilize that property to develop a commercial structure on that property. In lieu of that, the town would receive a piece of property that would be more beneficial to the fire department to utilize for activities, you know, the vehicles pulling in and out of the fire, fire station, things of that nature. The fire chief supports this because it would benefit the fire department by making his property more usable, and again, I think what's important is that there'd be a piece of property that would have some frontage across from the mall, across from the GMC dealership that could potentially be developed into some commercial piece of property.
Bring my taxes down?
It would if we had some commercial growth, no question about it.
So that's, so this is just for that one transaction, we're not allowing the Board of Selectmen with that, come through town meeting?
No, this is the one, one?
One and only.
One and only, yep.
Gotcha. And Article twenty-nine, amend zoning bylaws and zoning map for mixed-use redevelopment overlay district. This is a two-thirds vote, supported by the Board of Selectmen and supported by the Planning Board.
This, this again, would allow for the new mall and those who are contemplating a gas station as part of the redevelopment of the Kingston collection to have this, have this potential project be reviewed by the Planning Board, consistent with how the property at the mall has been, has been reviewed in the past. So this is a, an adjustment to zoning, to allow for our Planning Board to do the official review and consideration of anything that comes forward on that particular piece of property, rather than, rather than going through the zoning board of adjustment.
Okay. And Article thirty, modification of zoning accessory dwelling unit.
So.
Two-thirds vote, Planning Board favorable, by Planning Board and Board of Selectmen unanimously.
Yeah, the, you know, we, the town of Kingston approved accessory dwelling units last year, there have been some modifications to the state law with regards to accessory dwelling units, and what we're trying to do here is to modify the existing language to have it correspond with the state zoning, I'm sorry, state ADU accessory dwelling unit legislation. So it's more of a housekeeping issue than anything else.
Got your tongue tied there, though.
I, I'm sorry.
And Article thirty-one, amend the town of Kingston zoning bylaws uses in commercial district, two-thirds vote, Planning Board favorable, Board of Selectmen favorable.
So again, this was, this is more of a housekeeping issue, there were some items that were accidentally not, not, are translated to not allow in the district, which what we're trying to do here is, again, a housekeeping issue to have the table that supports this bylaw to be accurate. So again, it's more of a housekeeping type item, we're not asking to do something more or anything differently, it's already been approved, we're just trying to correct what was, what was included in the zoning bylaw after, after it was first approved.
Next article?
Next article's adjournment.
That's it?
That's the rumor.
So I'm Batman, you're Robin, and we'll see you April twenty-six, twenty twenty-five at the Kingston Intermediate School at nine AM?
Nine AM, try to, it's an important warrant, like it always is, try to be there if you can, and then our election is in the middle of May, so plan on that Saturday as well.
See you there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help.